I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
That wasn't it, was that one right?
Yes.
Yes or no?
It's state.
Okay.
Mr. Clickwell.
Aye.
Next, Ed as well.
Okay.
Your commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting to August 18th, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
District Clickwell.
Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning. So what we have is a contract today, we were looking to do a little bit of renovation on our first floor, and that's, it's actually almost like our second floor, so it's our administrative wing. What we have is, we do not have an area where our receptionist is enclosed, so what we have is a lot of privacy issues. When she's on the phone, we can hear everything, she talks with seniors regarding their issues, some financial problems, so what we're looking to do is do a renovation to enclose our reception area, to also add a hallway to our administrative wing, so that we can have a little bit better controlled access as well, because that seems to be an issue that we're having lately. So we did get with three different companies, and we asked for their quotes, and we're going with the best and most quote of Bowers, less Bowers.
This is what you talked about before, when you get off the elevator, you come in on the ground level, you get on the elevator, go up to, opens up, you step right out into that lobby.
Correct.
And you just...
Walk wherever you want. Right.
I don't, I don't, but it's possible.
So, so what we're looking to do is, we'll add a little seating area directly off the elevator, enclose our receptionist, there's another door to enter our administrative wing.
The Department of Aging is requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with Bowers Home Maintenance to perform renovation work with the Department of Aging during the year 2015, in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
The next is, our lease at our West Geogu Senior Center is actually up at the end of January. Because of the cost that we pay, the amount we pay, it's over $50,000 for a two-year contract, we need to go up for a request for proposal for West Geogu Senior Center. So, we want to start that process now, we don't want to get it down to the wire. So, I put together a nice request for proposal with all the amount of these that we're looking for, so we'd like to move forward with that process.
The Department of Aging is requesting the board grant permission to advertise a request for proposals to lease space for use as the West Geogu Senior Center to be held on Wednesday, October 7th, 2015, at 2:00 PM. Notice of this request for proposals will be advertised on August 27th, 2015, September 3rd, 2015, and on the county website.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell.
And lastly, I had to place an employee on administrative leave yesterday until further notice.
The Department of Aging is requesting the board approve the placement of Kathy Hart's assistant site coordinator unpaid administratively effective August 24th, 2015, until further notice.
Show more.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you.
Jessica, real quick, one thing I was gonna tell you, I actually forgot to say something to you earlier, I was, I was really impressed, Department of Aging stepped up with a friend of mine who had a bad stroke, put a ramp in, and I was, to be quite honest, didn't realize that they did that much, you know, so, I mean, kudos to, you know, what you guys do, and I was actually gonna ask Dave if maybe like, one of the night meetings we could have, just do like a, you know, 15, 20-minute presentation of some of those services, because I think sometimes people may not...
I didn't tell you need it.
To be quite honest with you, I didn't, and it was recommended by the Veterans Service Commission to call you guys, but, you know, if we could do something like a, just a 20-minute thing and try to advertise it, and then people could, you know, hear some of that, this is pretty nice.
Thank you, yeah, we have a lot of programs, and I think a lot of people are very focused on just the different senior centers that we have.
Yeah.
And appropriation, but that's just one of the small programs that we have, so we'd love to talk about our other programs and how they can be accessed.
Well, and what was interesting is, is his mother is 82 years old, and she lives in a quote-unquote "retirement village" in Florida, and said, "We have nowhere near the services of what we got and the assistance that we got here in Geogu," so, you know, should be proud about that, and I was too, you know, just to hear that.
If you saw the ramp, I bet it's really solid.
Oh, yeah.
It's in the carpet.
Yeah, I was.
You could probably drive a truck over.
Yeah, I was impressed, it was really neat, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, kudos, thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yep, good, yep.
First item on the list is an increase to our service contract with Bergen Associates, we had some additional work, we, original is one of our service contracts is open for $5,000, just to get it opened and have them on, you know, under contract, but we had some additional work we needed to do with some touchscreens and some cables for variable frequency drives at our apartment wastewater treatment plant and vacuum station, so this is an increase in that contract, increasing it by $4,250. We still have, after that's paid, we'll still have $3,000 left in that service contract.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve, execute the service contract, means form number one, increasing the contract with Bergen Associates Incorporated to perform additional telemetry control work in the replacement of touchscreens and cables for VFD at the apartment wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $4,250.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell.
The next two items are dealing with our contract B, contract A with Thompson Project.
The first item is a change order for the contract B, is actually adjusting the quantities for the sewer line, there were, the vacuum line, there was some reductions, the overall is an increase though, because we did do some additional boring of the sewer line that we weren't originally intending on doing, to save some trees that were just outside the right-of-way, that had we cut, had we put them in, put it in with a trench system, we'd be back dealing with the property owners within a year, because we would completely kill the trees. And then one of the other areas was to get the bore under the monument that Thompson has on their, in front of their town hall, that the trustees asked us to not, not, our original intent was to move it and then put it back in place, trustees asked us not to move it, so we bored underneath that to get, to get out of that. So that, that increase is mostly for the, for the additional boring, because the boring was, I forget exactly what the quantity was, but obviously, boring a sewer line is a lot more expensive than opening, cutting, and putting it in. The second item there with number seven is for contract A, some additional work at the vacuum station. After the original design was done, our guys asked us to have a high beam put in in order to be able to pull the pumps out of the well and bring them all the way to the door. To do that, we got, got that under the original contract, what was, what we didn't do at that point was turn the vacuum equipment that actually sits up on top 90 degrees, so we had to make that adjustment to turn that 90 degrees, so when they did lift that stuff out, up out of the hole, the big hole in the ground, they didn't have to work it around the, the vacuum equipment that was up top. And then also adding the SCADA system, which is matching the rest of our emission SCADA systems on the rest of our pumps.
I went there yesterday, drove around the area, just to see. You went east out to Ledges Park?
Yes.
Or the park, right?
Yes.
North up to the county, or township garage?
Township garage.
West, how far west did you go beyond the sewer plant?
Uh, where to the, it's about, let's say additional 500, 600 feet west of the sewer plant.
West for someone across the street?
Correct.
And south, you went down?
South, we go...
450 or 500 feet south of the square?
Correct.
But not out to that Sidley?
Correct.
Facility or the hall?
Yes.
I hadn't been there in a while to look at it, a few months, it appeared that most of the surface is restored if it was disrupted.
They, they restored the grass, the grass areas, they have not done the repaving of the driveways or the regraveling of the driveways for permanent final. They're still working, they're still working on, there's a couple leaks that they found when they did the overall testing at the end, that they're still trying to get those repaired, so that's why they haven't done any of that.
On the north end of the square, when you were doing the job, or they were doing the job, there was a lot of equipment parked on the north end, and there's a mound?
Correct.
That has a stone wall on the south side of that mound?
Yeah, they have not finished that, that repair yet.
Okay, and was that mound there to begin with?
There was, there was a mound there with the stone wall, and it was also landscaped with, with plants and bushes and such. The township has asked us not to replace the plants and bushes, but to just keep the mound, but just gra, put grass in on that mound, because they had it put in, my understanding from the trustees, they had that mound put in, you know, a few years back, and it was great, looked great for the first couple of years, but they never, it was never properly maintained, so the, you know, the, it became, it became more of a maintenance issue for them to properly maintain that mound with all the plantings. If we grassed it, they can still...
They want to grade it so they can get a mower over it.
They can run the mower over without any problem, but they didn't have to go in there and keep weeding it and keep mulching it every year and such.
And the monuments that were in question, those are down on like, the southwest side of the square? Down near the town hall and...
They're, yeah, they're, they're just...
There's three of them.
Just to the south of the, of the town hall's parking lot there.
Okay. And the site around the facility itself, because you're not done out there, that's pretty rough, yep, that would be...
Right, they're still working on finalizing all that, so, until they get all the, you know, all the construction work done, they didn't want to, you know, they, they're keeping, maintaining it as much as they could, but they didn't want to do too much and then have to dig up something they did, because, you know, they had to go back and redo some work or something.
Well, it's still under construction, so it looks like it, but the rest of the town is starting to normalize, is that fair?
Yes, there's still, there's still some areas where they need to go back and, and, you know...
And the driveways.
Patch up, well, even, even in the yards, when you go out there, you know, you've had some settling and things like that, so there's still some areas where they need to go out and, and regrade and reseed, they get, they get them level, as well as also going out and raking up some of the areas where they did, where they did put it in, because the rocks...
Yeah, the dirt settles and...
Have worked their way up to the top, so, that's a part of their...
That's still on, on the to-do list.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve, authorize the president of the board to execute change order number one, increasing contract fee with environmental construction incorporated for the Thompson Township Sewer Project for sewer quantity adjustments in the amount of $38,683. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute change order number two, increasing contract A with environmental construction incorporated for the Thompson Township Sewer Project for vacuum station changes and emission status system installation in the amount of $13,986.95.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell.
Our next item on the list here is for the, for service contract with Hazen Contracting
to do some asphalt repair on some driveways that were torn up a little bit when we went out to do some work for the property owners on their, the one was on Royal Oak, they had to dig up a cleanout, and actually pulled out about six linear feet, it was completely blocked, but it was about six feet of tree roots that had gotten into the, into their service line, within the right, within the right-of-way. We, you know, anything that, anything that's outside the right-of-way is the property owner's responsibility, when it's inside the right-of-way, still technically the property owner's responsibility, but we take care of it because no one, private, you know, private individuals working in and digging up the right-of-way, so, this was some, you know, some work that, when we were doing some of that, some of those repairs for these two properties, one on Royal Oak and one on Fox Hill, that we did, did some damage to the driveways because of the proximity, so we're repairing the driveways.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with Hazen Contracting Incorporated to perform paving services for a six-month period in an amount not to exceed $1,975.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell.
And our final item on here is to go back out and rebid for the relocation of our Santer Sewer on Ox, on Oxmore Way and Bainbridge, that's the sewer line that's on, in the hillside that is sliding away from years ago when that developer was put in. We, we already repaired that line about five years ago, and then we're starting to have issues with it again, so the plan is to flip it, take it from the, the side of the road that's on the hillside, and put it on, put the sewer line on the other side, so it's not in the subsidence area of the road. We had, we had bid that out before, we only had one, one bid that came in, and it was over the 10% over the original engineer's estimate. We're going, we tried to see if we could do it a different way, but we wound up having to go back after the bid, so we're gonna go back out the bid and get this, hopefully get this done soon. Now, when they do that, can you go back to them and say, "If you could do it at this, you can..." No. No, you have to go, you have to go back out and rebid. We, we, basically what we do is, we increase the engineer's estimates, now we have actual numbers.
I see.
The big issue with that is really, is dealing with the hillside, and there's also on the side we're moving it to, there's a retaining wall that we've got to hold up and protect, so...
I see.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board re-advertise for bids for the Oxmore Way sanitary sewer realignment to be held on Wednesday, September 16th, 2015, at 2:30 PM. Notice of this bid opening will be advertised on August 28th, 2015, September 4th, 2015, and on the county website.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell.
Good morning, have a good day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Heidi.
and additional appropriations for the public defender's office, and appropriation transfer and supplemental appropriation for the juvenile court for salary and benefit expenses, contract of precise borrowing of Ohio LLC for the Troy Oaks Forest Main Project for the Department of Water Resources in the amount of $695,213, payment to Business Smarts for the replacement of two document imaging servers for the Department of Job and Family Services in the amount of $25,024.28, and a payment to Southeastern Equipment for the state term purchase of a 2015 Case 521 FXT wheel loader for the Department of Water Resources in the amount of $112,508.55.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
I will ask that you record my vote as no on first item on there, which is 2015, looks like four zeros, 2629, and we know on that line item. And this, I said, then yes.
Can we lay in a veto?
We have in the past.
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell.
I'll put that on the thing.
Yeah.
I'll just go ahead and sign, sign that, and it's in the minutes for there. Okay. I didn't want to, you know, mark up your journal.
Hello, how are you? Last time I was here, you guys asked for some business, I didn't know that was happening. Oh. There we go.
Yeah, I thought we were Department of Aging, but we're here throwing them out here.
Good. We are here for the SMART grant 2016, 2017 renewal, last time you saw me, we were here for the increase with the 2015 grant, so, it's the same guidelines, we get incentives for placing someone on supervision, for terminating someone from supervision, without a present commitment, so it's gonna be given to us in certain payments.
So, explain to me, I was actually looking at this program yesterday online.
Okay.
Explain this program to me a little bit, why is there a grant, why is that just fueled by the normal budget?
Sure, sure, sure. It was a new, the state law came up with a SMART grant for various counties, there's multiple options you could take, one was the model number one, which we took, which was the incentives for placements and terminations, other ones had like, a treatment model was one, I know Ashbrook County has the SMART grant treatment model, but this is really to incentivize us to, to come up with alternatives to prison. For instance, we, we have GPS units now that the county owns, probation card owns, rather than having the offender pay such and such money to, you know, an installment fee, $12 a day, and we can provide that service at the cost, but we're looking to expand some treatment options for our injured people who can't necessarily afford, or have insurance to cover assessments or inpatient treatments or things like that, so...
So, this really takes care of non-prison oriented alternatives?
Yes.
Interesting, how's it working?
It's, it's working good, we, we do have a large sum of money that we are trying to figure out what, exactly what to use it for, to be honest, but we have multiple options.
That's a nice program.
It's a nice program.
So, I'd like to hear the audience hear that, that we've got this large pot of money, that we're still trying to figure out how to spend it.
Yeah.
And so, that sounds like kind of a government, kind of an operation?
Yes.
But, if, what's a recid, I'm kind of curious about recidivism rates and people who are, you know, are sent home versus sending them to prison, what is their likelihood of continuing criminal behavior?
Okay.
Is, is the value of going to prison a shock thing that will stop them from doing something bad versus going home, watching TV, eating some popcorn, saying, "Well, this didn't work out so bad," and then going out and, and doing some felonious...
Well, I talk about success rates for Geogu County, for the county police court, which is the felony level court for the county, we had, in our last annual report, it was a 70% success rate, so, 70% of the people were terminated without prison or jail at our last, you know, for the last fiscal year, so, we do have success in this county compared to other counties. I used to live in Ashbrook County for five years, so, much more success in this county than in Ashbrook County.
Interesting. So, and this costs us nothing, it's just a grant?
Yeah, no...
$200,000 out of the...
Up to $200,000.
Taxpayer pocket.
No local match.
No.
Unused funds will likely be returned to the standby.
Unused funds returned, okay. Use it or lose it, is that the...
Yes.
The county police court of all probation is requesting the board approve, execute the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction Subcity Grant Agreement for SMART Ohio pilot funding for fiscal year 2016 and fiscal year 2017 for the period ending June 30th, 2017, in an amount up to $200,000, to be paid in seven installments with no local match.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell.
Reluctantly, I love it when they call these programs SMART programs. Thank you for coming over.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I'm here today to bring through the request for release of funds for Shep Electric, it's a revolving loan fund company that we're, that we're working with, we've previously brought in front of you the notice of intent and the ERs, and that there's no historical impact on the property, and we had to go through the archaeological thing and everything, so this is just housekeeping, asking the state to approve, asking you to approve, when we are ready to move forward with the loan, they will release the funds when we ask for it, that we've gone through all the proper steps to the state.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the State of Ohio Development Services Agency Office of Community Development Request for Release of Funds, RROF, and Certification for Federally Funded State Projects in regards to the CDVD program incoming for the Shep project.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just the explanation, both of these items are, are some of the kids, and when I originally agreed to hire the first one, Ariel Layman, they were gonna end it at the end of August, now they found funds from mid-year to September, so, why utilize our funds if I can have them free?
Sure.
That's what both of these are.
And you could use the help, right?
Oh, yeah.
Karen, would you like to work third?
Karen?
Yes.
Could you speak a little louder if you can?
Sure.
Because our, our high...
I'm not weak.
Oh, our high-tech sound system is on fritz, so...
All right.
Thank you. This was a great program, I was over there meeting with the kids the other day.
It's awesome.
And, great group of kids, we, there was a lot of employers, and they had a good experience.
Oh, you went to the picnic?
I went to the picnic.
Okay, good.
And we talked to them.
Yeah, it's a nice thing, and it's a good way to train kids that have never had jobs, they have no idea how to interview, they have no idea how to do any of that, they have no work behaviors yet, so it's, I think it's wonderful.
And it was a great program, it taught them, you know, you gotta show up on time, and you gotta work hard, you gotta do, and I've talked to a number of people who had kids that were working, and all the kids that were in charge, so it's a really good program.
Yeah, I can't say no about it, I mean, every time I've been up here this summer, I've talked about it, I think it's great.
The county home is requesting the board amend the motion from August 11th, 2015, changing the start date to read, approve hiring Ariel Layman to the position of part-time attendant, number 1504-1, to be effective October 1st, 2015, at a rate of $9.39 per hour. After the successful completion of a 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $9.89 per hour.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Mr. Rear.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Clickwell.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen, for helping.
Bye.
Morning.
Morning.
Hi. I'm up here for the, our annual 4D service contracts, one is with the prosecutor's office, and one is with the court of common plead for magistrate services, this allows us to use the money that we have through our state allocation incentives and administrative fees to pay for services that both the prosecutor's office and the courts provide to us in establishing paternity, establishing support orders, and also enforcing support orders. And the nice thing is, this is income from the faculty general fund for their services.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve and execute the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services 4D contract between the Geogu County Child Support Enforcement Agency and the Geogu County Common Police Court for Magistrate Services for the period July 1st, 2015, through June 3rd, 2016, in the amount of $103.87 per hour. The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve and execute the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services 4D contract with the Geogu County Child Support Enforcement Agency... 2015 at a rate of $9.30 per hour. After the successful completion of a 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $9.89 per hour.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Thanks Karen for helping.
Hi.
Morning.
Hi.
I'm up here for the, our annual 4D service contracts, one is with the prosecutor's office and one is with the court of common police for magistrate services. This allows us to use the money that we have through our state allocation incentives and administrative fees to paper services that both the prosecutor's office and the courts provide to us in establishing paternity, establishing support orders, and also enforcing support orders. The nice thing is this is income from the general fund for their services.
The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve and execute the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services 4D contract between the Jaw County Child Support Enforcement Agency and the Jaw County Common Police Court for magistrate services for the period July 1st, 2015 through June 3rd, 2016 in the amount of $103.87 per hour. The Department of Job and Family Services is requesting the board approve and execute the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services 4D contract with the Jaw County Child Support Enforcement Agency and Jaw County Prosecutor's Office for legal services for the period July 1st, 2015 through June 3rd, 2016 in the amount of $53.48 per hour.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
Thank you.
Bye now. Who are you speaking to? Are you speaking to the?
This is where the contract with Saks Consulting. Timothy Dimoff, Saks Consulting, has sent the board a proposal to do a overview, security overview, looking at the physical security of the annex exterior, primarily the parking lot in the alleyway. So I believe the amount is $2,200. He's very experienced this kind of work. I think this office felt that it was necessary to engage an outside professional, really unconnected to any one department or agency, because there's been concerns expressed by a number of agencies. And our fear was that if commissioners didn't come up with somebody who could service everyone, there might be multiple security audits done at extra costs to taxpayers. And they might come up with findings that might be incompatible, one consultant versus another consultant. So the board is going to consider the hiring of Saks Consulting to do the security assessment with the security of all county employees that work at the annex in mind.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the contract agreement with Saks Consulting and Investigative Services Incorporated to provide a security survey, review, and vulnerability analysis of designated area and buildings during the year 2015 in an amount not to exceed $2,200.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Spillar.
I don't really know enough about this to be able to take a vote on it, so I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Spillar.
Yeah, this was the proposal that he made was actually went beyond the parking lot for general comment.
For general comment, yeah.
So focuses on the parking lot or do the concerns that we had done. And then he's actually, there we go. He's doing a vulnerability assessment of other general areas within the building and so forth.
Yeah, I assume he's going to talk to all the stakeholders up there. I certainly think we ought to encourage him to speak to the gentleman that did the assessment for the courts a couple of years ago to make sure that he doesn't overlook anything that specifically was identified at that time and incorporated into an overall study for everybody.
Go ahead. I don't think it's any secret that the juvenile court, juvenile probate court, and others in the county, primarily us, are at disagreement over some things. And I would say daily, if not every other day, we receive correspondence from that court telling us what we have to do, suggesting that we better do it quickly. Many of the items are items that physical constraints do not let us do in order to benefit the court. It jeopardizes someone else in that building. And I would move that this body direct the director and appropriate personnel to look into what is required to move the juvenile probate court from its current location at the courthouse annex to 470 Center Street, Building 8. That would require the relocation of a number of people, but there is absolutely no way that unless one of us becomes the creator, that we can change the facilities upon the square to accommodate all the suggestions made to the commissioners. It's my understanding that we are required by law to provide the courts with safe, suitable space. And I would propose that we look at Building 8, which is out in the open, has plenty of parking. Parking can be fenced if you want, what have you, and move the court down there and they have free rein of the building. That's a motion, it's a long one. I'd ask to have one constructed, but time prohibited. So that's my motion. Needs a second or could be ignored.
Well, that particular motion kind of catches me off guard a little bit, so I'm not prepared to second it or to, although I'm openly discussing that option. The courts have certain specific kinds of considerations that need to take into account. There's going to be investment on that current building and so forth to accommodate the court. So I don't think I'm ready to second that. And I'm certainly sensitive to the issues that you raised in terms of some of the challenges that we have with the court facilities or the letters we've been receiving from the court and so forth. But at least from my perspective, that's an intriguing idea, something that certainly warrants a lot more thought and investigation, so.
I recognize that, respect that. I also understand that, as it was pointed out to us erroneously recently about illegal public meetings and all this other, that if we're going to have discussion on this issue, it needs to be done in a public forum. That's why I'm bringing it up.
Well, I would certainly like to, if we're going to have a rational conversation about this, look into the requirements of the court and make sure that Building 8 would satisfy those requirements. And of course, the judge would have to be taught, you know, this has to be discussed with the judge and so on and so forth, so.
Do you want to bring up the latest correspondence and requests the prosecutor needed?
I wasn't going to bring it up, but since you mentioned it, I will talk about it real quick. We had made, there was a letter sent to our office making an allegation that there might be some misbehavior in terms of sunshine law. So we asked for an opinion from our prosecutor regarding that. I have a letter from the prosecutor indicating the, stipulating the requirements of a public meeting. And all I will say about that, I'm not going to read this entire letter to you, is this, that we as elected officials are permitted to be in the same space at the same time as long as we don't discuss together certain information. And I can guarantee you that in this case, Commissioner Spillar was not present. He was enjoying himself in Alaska or down in Texas, I forget which, one of those two places, so. But Commissioner Reed and I, we're in the same parking lot, albeit at quite a distance from each other. We were individually having a conversation with a person we were investigating for the contract that we just agreed to today, talking to him about his qualifications, background, ideas, thoughts, and so on and so forth, which we're permitted to do under Ohio law. In no time did we have a conversation about this with each other in the parking lot. And anybody that would say anything to the contrary, I would suggest has an agenda. And if there's any question to the meeting here, if you have any questions on this, I've got permission from Mr. Flay, our prosecutor, for you to call him. He was standing there in the parking lot, observed our activity, and certainly could comment on whether there was inappropriate activity going on at night. So regarding that particular issue, I can't speak to why we, why there was, the comments that was made, I'm disappointed that those comments were directed at this office. We're doing the best that we can to work our way through this situation that was presented to us by the court. We're trying to accommodate the court to the extent we can. The vast majority of the things that were requested in the letter from the court, we're accommodating. There is one issue which impacts others in the parking lot, and we have a responsibility to all residents of that building, which is a county building, that we look out for their interest, their security interest, and so on and so forth as well. We can't accommodate one over another, whether, you know, we can't play favorites, even though sometimes maybe we'd like to. It's our obligation not to play favorites. And I know that the court has a special position because of their, they are the court, and there is a separation of powers situation going on there. But with that said, we're doing the best that we can to accommodate this complex situation. You would hope to think that a parking lot is not going to be a big deal or a complex situation, unfortunately. When you start talking about people's parking spots, you get into an emotional area with some folks. And so if this is what it is, we're trying to work our way through it. There's, we're open to any questions or comments on this, but let me assure you, there was no inappropriate activity going on in that parking lot. Both, all three commissioners sitting here, I'm sorry for maybe speaking for Mr. Spillar here, are very sensitive to our responsibilities under the Ohio laws, and we do everything that we can to ensure that we're in full compliance at all times. So we're very sensitive to that. But with that, how did it clear?
Yeah, I am, I'm happy that you approved the security analysis. I am more concerned as a resident, as an employee of the county, and as a county auditor, that we do not have any security in any of the offices that I sit in, other than the second floor where we have security. Anyone can walk into any of our areas and do harm to not only my staff, but the residents along with their children who come to my office quite regularly. And I want to make sure that you commissioners understand that there you have a duty, not only to protect the county employees, but also to protect the residents who come into our county and come into our offices, because we're at a watershed moment here now, because that building has never been secure other than the second floor. Even at this door, coming into your commissioner's office, isn't very secure. So somebody has to start thinking about security, not only for a particular department, but all county offices where we could be vulnerable. Thank you for listening to that.
I appreciate what you said, and in the world that we live in today, there is a term, first of all, we're not law enforcement, so we can't protect anybody. The most best we can do is to enable those folks that can protect people and to ensure that we've got proper, necessary and reasonable, that's a legal term that's pushed, that's put out to us on a regular basis, necessary and reasonable features in place to ensure that we're secure. Given the nature of Jawa County and the great folks that we have living here, I don't think any of us, and hopefully you don't feel at risk this morning, feel at risk on a general basis. Do bad things happen? Do bad people exist? Absolutely. Do we overreact to that and lock ourselves down in a police state because there are bad people out there? I'm one of those people that would say, no, I would rather personally feel a little bit at risk perhaps, rather than feel like I've got to be constantly in a police state situation. And so we are taking a look at, as we've always done, the risk involved, and I'm speaking for myself here to some degree, I can't speak for the other gentleman at this table, but take a look at the actual risk and accommodate that with necessary and reasonable implementations of security measures. The build, the annex building and the whole courthouse area in the downtown Charten area is a very public area. It is extremely hard to completely secure. And let me comment, let me make this comment. If somebody wants to hurt you, they will find a way to hurt you. They will come to Bean's Coffee Shop, they will follow you home, they will find you at the grocery store. If somebody has that intent, you cannot protect yourself 100% completely unless you're like the President of the United States and you carry security and a bulletproof car with you every place you go. And so again, from my perspective, we need to approach this in a reasonable fashion, ensuring reasonable and necessary security. We are taking certain activity, which I don't want to talk about because it might jeopardize the security we are putting into place, but we are taking reasonable steps to improve the security for everybody that works in the downtown Charten area. And we're looking at other actions and activity, that's the reason we engaged this particular.
None of the elected officials have watched the idea that says we are in an unsafe environment.
Good. And I don't think, I don't, that wasn't.
Except one in the letters that we all received.
Yeah. I mean, this is, we know that there's, that there's other things going on here, but it does, the value in this is that we did have, this does raise the issue, it is worth looking at. You know, we oftentimes become complacent in the world that we live in, and we don't take proper security measures or take a step back and look at our situation. I mean, I know even with my own personal situation, my home, you know, every so often you have to kind of revisit, what's my security situation? How about, do I need a home security alarm? Do I need to carry firearms? Do I need to put a fence up? You know, what do you need to do in order to protect yourself? And what is the right balance between personal security and how much you want to spend and so on and so forth? And we are constrained by dollars at the end of the day. But the value in this whole conversation, there is value in this conversation, is bringing it up, taking a look at the situation, which we intend to do, we're going to do the responsible thing. We've engaged a professional, somebody that we know, somebody who has proper credentials and so on and so forth, and we will be taking a look at the situation. Again, that's, I'm speaking from my own personal position, I'm not speaking for the commissioners that are here. And so we have been asked, I'm not, I'm not going to address that.
You're not going to address the latest request?
I'm not going to. You're free to bring it up if you want.
Well, I will. Because of the timeline that he imposed, that we have to let someone know by tomorrow noon whether we'll be attending this, whatever it is. I noticed that while the directive from him was you will appear in my chambers on the second floor, blah, 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 but be cognizant of the public meeting aspect by asking the commissioners to come there. I'm not real sure of the mechanics of that. I'm not real sure how we notice a meeting at someone else's facility that will be in attendance to, that someone else will control who attends the meeting and not us. There may be some legal precedent for that, but I really don't have the time. If we want to, at this point in time, schedule an executive session, a meeting, a public meeting, to enter into executive session to discuss matters of security at the time mentioned in that letter by the other person, and we, along with them, but primarily we, set those in attendance. If we were to move and adopt that, I will do it. Other than that, I'm not going to show up because I don't want to read about in the paper that I was at an illegal meeting after the fact. I'm not going to that meeting on Friday unless that meeting is our meeting held here and we are in control.
About the control thing, let me speak to.
Well, I mean, control to the extent, control to the extent of who's in attendance. Well, I mean, control to, to the extent, control to the extent of who's in attendance.
Blake being a bit cryptic, let me clarify this. Uh, we were sent a letter by Judge Gendel, um, in which we were asked to be in his court, um, on Friday to discuss security matters. Um, and so that is a complicated thing because the three of us or two of us cannot meet together unless it's in a public session. And so, um, I would be, uh, willing to consider sending an invite to the judge. Certainly would like to sit down and have a personal, personal face-to-face conversation with him, that I have no issues with that whatsoever, um, and talking this out in fact that that would probably be a very healthy thing to do. Um, and what we can invite in here, as Blake said, if, uh, and I'd be willing to entertain that motion, um, so that we can have a public meeting, then we go into executive session. We are permitted under Ohio revised code to go into public session to discuss security matters. This is a security matter, talk about the security of this office and security of the parking lot and so on and so forth. And so, um, I would be willing to entertain that motion if, if that was what we were jointly interested in doing. Um, I, yeah, I think it would be a very healthy thing to have a conversation with the judge, um, whether it's at his place, if we can do it somehow, or ours, I don't really care. But, um, it wouldn't be appropriate to go to his office unless we had a public meeting. And, uh, so I would suggest, we got great, great conference rooms, we got good coffee, I'll even buy the donuts, and, uh, we'll invite the judge and whoever you'd like to bring, and we can have a conversation with him, so.
At, at the time that he specified, so, because we already know he's got that time free, for this, for this purpose.
I'm fine with that. I don't know how everybody else feels. What is it say? Four o'clock on?
No.
On, on, that's what we're gonna respond to.
Noon.
Okay, noon on Friday.
Yeah. I, I mean, I would be in favor of that, uh, but, but, uh, I, I don't wanna play the sunshine law violation game again or any of the other, and, uh, I would also say, um, that this is pending the prosecutor's opinion as far as whether or not the, the motions are set, uh, the, the proc, procedure is set to where it-
It's permissible.
Yeah, complies with the-
So why do we have to establish a special meeting?
I, I see no harm.
I, I don't see any either. We have a special meeting, we call a special meeting, we enter into an executive session for matters of security, the population of which meeting is set by two sides of the meeting, at such and such a time. It's right here in front of God and everybody, and, uh, the people can sit in the parking lot and watch when we come in and go out, but they just can't be in the room. And we do it at the time that he suggested because that's a time that he has, whoever, I assume whoever he wants here has already been cleared.
Well, I mean, it, it does no harm to make the invitation, so I would make the motion. Let's move to, to, uh, try to establish a public meeting on Friday, do an invitation. We don't know where that's gonna go. I mean, it, my, I'll say publicly, our, our, the, the relationship between the court and the commissioner's office has been strained, that's not a surprise to anybody you see at the press. Um, I would love to improve that. I mean, the intent of meeting with the judge is to, in, to try and, and overcome whatever this silliness is, and I'll put it in that way, between our offices. We all live in the county, we all serve as citizens of Jogger County, and we ought to be, um, working together, not against each other, uh, in order to be able to do that. And so in the interest of, uh, improving our relations, I'd love to sit down with the judge and have a conversation with him. We might even think about expanding the involvement since security is involving other people in that, uh, building. And so we might, we might talk about that, that brings other, other political issues, but I, I move to, to invite the judge here for a public meeting, we're going to executive session. Of course, we have to make sure that we're on solid ground relative to being able to do that, and we can, uh, get a read on that. So, that's the motion.
I, I will second your, uh, motion and, but also what you said about, you know, it's not our intention to be adversarial. Uh, so I would second your thoughts and your words on that, but also second the motion to schedule a meeting.
This is what I have, schedule a special meeting on Friday, August 28th, 2015, at 12:00 PM, for the purpose of an executive session to discuss security matters and details.
Let, let me, let me throw something else out there. Ralph just indicated he's not gonna be available on Friday. Well, the judge had made himself available this time, so we know that that's a good time, but I would like to have Ralph in the room if possible. Is there any time on Friday or Thursday that you can get together? Because we, we could make an invite for a better time.
Thursday or Friday? No.
No? Well, let's just go ahead and go with this time then, um, and we'll, uh, we'll see if the invitation is accepted, so.
I seconded it, so.
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Abstain.
Mr. Claymore?
Aye.
Hmm. Is there anything else?
Um, I don't think so.
I'm Nick Kujer. Thank you for coming.